We open the meeting at four fifty-nine, and the first order of business is to elect a chair. So we need to have motions for the board to elect a chair.
Since I'm New Kid on the Block, do I get to go first?
Sure.
I shall. So this is for, do I need to make a formal motion to nominate, or can I just?
Yes.
Okay. I would actually like to nominate Scott Doherty for Chair of the Committee.
Second motion. Any other motions for Chair?
I would like to be Chair. Been here two years. It's in the line. What?
Nothing.
Okay.
I've done, I'm waiting for you to finish your.
I'd like to be the Chairman of the Plan and very planning our Selectment Board this year.
Okay. Can discussion continue?
Discussion continues right as.
All right. Why I wanted to nominate Scott is you've made it clear, I think, that how overwhelmed you have felt this past year, and also clear that you think this may be your last year running, and I thought it would be a good way to lessen your feeling of being overwhelmed on the Board, and still let you attend to those tasks that you want to attend to, and would hopefully keep your last year more calm.
Well, I wouldn't worry about my calmness because I'm hoping we're going to share the load a little more around here.
Yes.
So that's how that's going to resolve itself, I hope, and I just think that it's something I'd like to do and experience along with the rest of this, so. That's it.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
Okay. We have motion for Scott and motion for Ken. Do the first motion first. All those for Scott?
Aye.
Aye.
All those for Ken?
Aye.
Scott is nominated as the Chair.
Thank you. So moving forward, I want to make sure that this board addresses all of those who appear before us with respect and courtesy. So that's my expectation for 2024. I think Jim Miller said it best at Town Leading when he said it's okay to disagree, but not okay to be disagreeable. So moving forward, that's going to be it. As far as committee assignments, I'm going to email you both. Please send me back your choices for committees. So I'll get that out hopefully tonight.
I did hear.
I emailed the list.
I got it, thank you.
Everything that everybody.
Oh, very good, okay.
I think you have copies of it in your, in your little packets.
Thank you, Ken.
There's committees with Board of Selectment Representatives, Board of Selectment Liaisons with the departments, we have Fire, Police, and Highway, and then committee members for reappointment for the different committees, zoning board, conservation, historic, and those appointment slips can be done April, at the meeting on April 1st. Those appointments, and then the appointments to the committees can be done on the April 1st meeting.
Okay, makes sense to me.
I did hear from Kelly on the Conservation Commission, I don't know, I was uncertain of one of the names, who Steve Sarin was, so I reached out to Kelly to ask a little bit about his background, and she said the Conservation Commission will be discussing member terms at their meeting on Thursday, and they're going to forward their request for an appointment to the Board of Selectment after that meeting.
Sounds good to me. And the committees with the Board of Selectment Representatives, these are historical that have representatives, it does not mean that you can't attend other committee meetings. There's, there's other committees that are there.
Yep.
And I think it's been discussed in the past whether we need a Board of Selectment Representative on each of these, and it was kind of determined that at the time, and going back twenty years, that it wasn't needed, but if you feel differently, this is, you're the board members, and you can decide what, what boards and committees need representation from the Board of Selectment.
Who is currently, the one thing that is not, is not included on this list is who's currently the Board of Selectment.
Which committees and boards aren't listed on this?
No, which committees are currently have, who is currently the Board of Selectment representative to these committees, or is it just all over grabs?
Planning Board currently is Kent, Conservation, we didn't have anybody, I think Scott, I mean, yeah, Kent, Bob was the Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
But then when he left, we didn't continue that. Solid Waste is Kent, Energy is Kent, the Community Power is Kent. So that's current.
Yeah.
Those are the current.
I think we can help you out there, Ken. Okay.
Cheryl was liaison with police. She was liaison with police, Scott, you were fire, and Ken was fire. Right, okay.
Okay.
And Ken, just so I'm, I'm certain, with respect to committee members' reappointments for 2024.
Yes.
We're taking them from each commission or committee, correct?
Yeah, so these are the, these are the committee members that are currently onboard, and if you look in the town report, decide their name, it will give up.
I did see that.
Yep.
Which I've got actually.
Those are the names that have, I mean, reappointing 2024.
Correct, okay. But we're waiting, for instance, with respect to Historic District, we're waiting for something from them indicating that both Kevin and Harry wish to be reappointed.
Correct.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, typically, we, we contact these committees and ask them if there's any changes, if there's any people want to be off, or they want to be reappointed, or anything like that.
Okay, sounds good. All right. All right, do you want to do, what do you think, a department heads?
Yep. We got Sam.
Yep, Sam, you're going. Thank you, sir.
Just if I'm.
Just what?
Yeah, yeah. Front there.
Yep.
Unpaid receivables as of today. The 2023 bills, we've got forty, almost fifty invoices, but that is duplicates, so it's not really fifty accounts that are, it's just that the invoices that are overdue. And we're going to be sending out leave notices next week. Remind people that they've got thirty days to pay before they get a leave. Last year, we still have a timber tax from 2023 outstanding, and there was a payment made on that, I think it was like a nine hundred dollar payment, and they said that they're going to come and clean up the rest of that before we send out leave notices. So we're still waiting, waiting on that.
Okay.
And looking into April, we'll start sending out leave notices for the 2021, those top two properties that need attention.
Okay.
One of which is an occupied property.
First one or second?
Second one.
Thank you. With respect to the folding issue that was approved.
Yes.
How long? Soon?
Four or five weeks.
Okay.
Ken's got the paperwork to sign off on that.
Okay.
May?
That's it?
All right.
What do you want to?
That's Sam. Thank you, Sam.
You'll go next, Jim?
Sure.
Okay, starting at the top of the first page, eighty-one incidents here to date, slightly above average, two major, two events in town last month that were noteworthy. Assisted a horse on Bathurst Road, and the horse was cranking it up. They were considering euthanizing the animal, it was thirty-one years old, and we were able to, with some equipment that we have, get him upright. Since then, I identified a piece of equipment that we were missing there that would have made it a lot easier, and purchased one, so at the, for very short money, so went well, it was a good story all around, and put it on, make sure we put it on social media, everybody loves a good animal rescue story, and from what I understand, everyone got it up. I didn't see it, but, so, a lot of positive feedback, a wonderful one of ours, so.
What does one purchase to lift a horse?
So we purchased a lobby animal rescue sling. It's a sling with handles on both ends, and it has, it's ten inches wide, about ten feet long, and we used that, what we used to rescue was, we had a sling that was two inches, it did the trick, but this is a bad way, we put a change of direction, and it created a mechanical advantage on the ceiling above them, and basically, we got like eight people at that call, and we were able to make it happen, so.
It's a happy ending.
Happy ending.
Right.
And now, one that I don't, that I didn't, it was just, now for activities, I thought about it, we had a carbon monoxide incident last week on Southwest, and this, this just a reminder for people to have their carbon monoxide detectors working, if they didn't have them, it might have been a different outcome, probably would have been a different outcome for the mom, the child, and the husband who wasn't home during the day when she called. So, odorless, tasteless, and Harry, if you have a seal detectors, I'm willing to tend you to also replace them.
That also had a happy ending?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we identified the source immediately, shut it down immediately, and take us technicians there to remedy the situation.
Great, all right.
And the fire prevention tab, we do fire duty today in school, those are done monthly, inspections are doing a couple a week, and now fire permits for outside burning are now required. They can be done online, it's going to be posted on the town website, if it hasn't been already, there's a link online, you can purchase it online, or you can visit the fire station, we can handwrite you a permit. On the membership, Nelson, her bachelor transition is just about complete, training's done, in these, he does have the access now, laudables, we had to jump through with Loudon, but he is a paramedic, the guy taking Dave's spot, so he can administer narcotics when, when the situation calls for it, and now he has access to the drug box of Loudon, if they're in our town, and I'm working to do the same with, I'm a contract with the ambulance service in Belmont as well. It's not as easy as just giving me the key and opening the box, there's a lot of regulations and control for that stuff.
So he'll have the access to the drug box, you say, from Loudon?
Yes, right now, and that's the other tool I'm working on, yeah.
Chief, as far as Lieutenant Nelson's last day, when is that?
I bet that on the next section.
Okay.
Yeah. And as far as membership per VM, so as, as a proposal was presented to all three select in last year, at this time, with the destination of Dave leaving, the thought was, we created a drop for her three days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then two days a week to be filled with per VM, a scheduling model. Happy to say, April and May are picked up by all in-house members, so my intention's to keep it in the department, people that are familiar with the town and all that stuff, so it's a, that's working like we want it to. And in my plan, moving, moving forward, I'm scheduling a month in advance, if I have a day that I can't get somebody at, you know, the place that's going to be knocked out, I'll just change my schedule and come in that day as opposed to another day.
Oh, great.
So, you know, so generally, we'll always have the town covered. Projects, Member Appreciation Ceremony, thanks for all the support, I had a lot of positive feedback from the members, from the residents of the community, and the elected officials, thank you for the support there. Our annual pancake breakfast is on April twentieth, and breakfast is served seven thirty to nine thirty, it's our only fundraiser, Canterbury Revolting Fire and Fire Association, that was funded to use to purchase plaques and axes and retirement memorabilia or flowers for deceased one of a, of a department member, so it's ten dollars per plate, and we appreciate the support. Lieutenant Nelson's last day is the last Friday, the last, the last workday of March three, twenty-nine, twenty-four, could be an open house from one to three, we'll have cake, coffee, water, all that stuff, so come on in if you're free, and we'd really like to see you.
Is this the best advertisement for his party?
Yes, I have an email going out on Mon, Monday, the Mon, the Monday of that week, Monday of the last week, so let's see. I just submitted a grant for, request for two thousand, well, AFG two thousand twenty-three, so it's basically, they go like this for a year, so it's current to buy some hose for our new fire engine, so we'll see, if I can get the feds to pay that, I will, so at least I'm picking up tires on that.
How much does hose for a new fire engine?
What's that?
How much does hose for a new fire?
Hose and nozzle is about twenty-six thousand dollars.
Really?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
All right.
So I do have that in, in the budget, because the one I posed, eight fifty for the fire truck, the fire truck was eight hundred, the fifty was things that purchased hose and nozzles and any equipment that we needed, but if I can return that twenty-six and not use that for that, and get the feds to pay, I'm, I'm trying anyway, so, no problem, you never know where it's, how it's going to end up.
Well, good to plan for it in case not.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
And the, the Narcan, which is a drug that's used to combat overdoses from opioids.
Yeah.
The greater, if you look on the next two pages, it's a summary, but it's a, the Capital Area Public Health Network, they're reaching out to all communities in the state, providing a Narcan, a Narcan box with Narcan and some rescue equipment, similar to the AED box that's posted in Town Hall and places like that, it looks basically the same thing, and basically at no cost for the town. She came in a couple weeks ago, giving a presentation, I have a box sitting in my office, it's generally posted in a public building, it's generally in a library, so I told her, I said, "The selectmen don't agree with it, I will return it to you," but there's no cost to us now, there's no cost to us in the future. There's a picture of it on the first page of the handout, there's, it's like a Claire box, so the top picture is laying on its side, and the, the middle picture on the middle page is a picture of what it looks like, and any bystander can use it. So I'm just waiting for direction, you can review the, the stuff and let Ken know, or I don't know what the process is, but I'm not going to mount that until I get a knock from the board.
Do they just offer the town one, or, like I can think of three places where it would probably be good, what if you requested more?
I never, I never requested more, but I would assume that we could probably get more.
And Chief, it looks like that's, it says at the top, indoor.
It's an indoor, yeah, so it would, my, my suggestion was it would, it would be placed right above, if it goes in the library and/or Town Hall, right above where the AED is.
Okay, so when the library's closed, it would be inaccessible, right?
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why it seems like it would be used for a couple more, if the library's closed, but there are people in here, and where, where do we have AEDs in town?
AEDs are in Town Hall, Library, Lobby of Police, Fire, Highway, and those are the ones that are, there's one at the transportation, so. And this is no cost now or in the future, and I've maintained it as far as expiration dates. I don't need an answer, honey, so hopefully on time.
Wait and discuss.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, how many, yeah.
And where?
Where and how many, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be, basically, right now, we have one, so where, and, and yes or no, and then, you know, she's fine, if I need to return it, that's fine too, so.
Oh, I can't, I can't handle returning, but okay.
In the meantime, I'll reach out and see if there's, if we can get another one, okay?
Thanks.
Question for both Chiefs, typically, that front door to the Public Safety Center, the outside doors, that locked doors?
Locked.
Locked. So it would be inaccessible there as well?
Yeah. My experience tells me, coming from, coming from the city where we have a fair amount of overdoses, if somebody is looking for help, as far as somebody that's overdosing, generally, they don't go to the police station.
Yeah.
Would they go to the library?
Not quite sure, you know, so, not quite sure. And we have that stuff on a fire truck, so this is where we kind of, even if they do go to a police station, we have it in the fire truck.
Is it typically the person who is overdosing who's going for the box, or somebody who's with them who says?
Somebody who's with them.
I need to?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So a public outreach sort of campaign to let people know in town where it is, because we've had our problems.
There's a bunch of, there's a fact sheet in there also, that you can read at your convenience.
Great.
Any questions for me?
No.
I just have one more thing, I just want to acknowledge, this is last meeting, and Chief LeBrecq, he was here three years before I was, a little over three years, and, you know, a lot of communities take it for granted that they assume police and fire have a good worker relationship, that's not always the way, and he said that, he set the way he set the standard, and we have an incredible working relationship, and that's because of the standard you set before I got here, so thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who wants to go next?
Rachel? May I?
May you.
I would love to.
What do you use, pause and you'll help?
Hi.
Good evening, congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
And congratulations on beautiful town meeting.
Hey.
Absolutely.
I appreciate them all.
The feedback that I received this morning has been the greatest feedback I've ever hear post, post-town meeting, so.
That's good, yeah.
Well, it did come along.
Lots of people talk about town meeting, previous to town meeting, and a lot of people talk about it after town meeting, and it's been all positive, so congratulations, and as we all know, most of that goes to Cal.
Actually, that's on my list of things to talk about.
I'm sure, okay, as it should be.
Yeah.
Oh, my God, what is up there? Number one. Number two, I am getting around a warrant article next year, our copy machine, I'm not going to say this too loud, because my copy machine may hear this, and I know that generally the operations inside the library is none of your concern, but I want to let you know that I'm signing a Toshiba Color Copier lease, and I would only, I only share that, only because in the past, sometimes warrant articles have included heavy-duty copy machines, and the state of New Hampshire has a good contract with Toshiba, so if another department ever needed that, I have the contact for that. My copy machine, and this is where we need to be really quiet so it doesn't hear, has made over a hundred and seventy thousand copies with out service and toner, so we don't, shh, 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 we don't really know, but I just bring that to you in terms of.
Rachel, as you speak, the copiers.
It's, it's.
Flatlining.
It's just flatlining. But I bring that to you, one, because you're not going to see one article from the library for an eight thousand dollar copier, and number two, it is a, I love, in the, in the era of collaboration, it's always good to pass that on to other departments. Number three, I feel really good about library-only signs. You're going to talk about that later tonight, maybe?
It's on the agenda to talk about.
Okay, perfect. So, great.
We can talk about it now, if you'd like.
Could we talk about it now?
Yes.
John, you okay with that?
Because, of course, it came up again, just as a little bit of review, last month, I proposed to Ken that when we talk about library parking only, one, because farmers market, people have to haul those out every single time, whenever there's an event in Town Hall, like the antique, when Joe Warmup, whatever that was, cat and fever, I had no parking, and then again, voting. So John came down, we had a nice discussion, and they're very expensive, and I would love five of them, and what do you say?
How expensive, very expensive.
I don't know, how expensive, very expensive.
I think they're roughly forty, assign thirty for the post.
So, yeah, Rachel would ask for five signs out right out here.
Yeah.
Designated as library-only, but I think we could put library-only during library hours or something like that on there.
I would love that.
Do you have a vendor that you use for your signs?
John's.
Works, I, I hope.
Because there's also, through the correction facility, they offer discounted rates for that, sorry.
Use them.
I know, I, but I figured.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Collaboration, we love it. But I would, I would love that, especially because I'm getting a new, working lot, it's going to boost up.
Yeah.
And I think it's going to involve a little bit of fill, because that's a little bit thin, Beth knows, because you're the one generally running the signs over Cathy, so it might involve a little fill in there, if they not, but I would really, really appreciate them for our mobility impaired patrons.
And this is five spaces more than the handicap space?
Correct.
That's where we put the farmer's market signs down?
Correct, and I have a handicap space in the back with the ramp access, I have this one, the first spot, it would be the five consecutive parking spaces.
Great, well, that would save having to put those out.
It would.
And five is enough?
I would say five is enough, I think seven, Chairman of the Friends of Alton Public Library said, do the whole lot, I don't think we need seven, I, I really think five is fine, staff parks in the back anyway, and I think that's taking too much of that parking lot, because I also did put a book collection bin in one of the spots, so I'm cognizant of that. Okay? So, and maybe Ken can follow up with your decision on that?
Yeah.
Okay, Ken, you said Reardon was coming back for my pillar construction?
Yeah, it's actually Jay Burwick.
It's actually Jay Burwick, I thought it was Jay Burwick, okay. And so we're just waiting for Cross to dissipate, he needs to put sonotubes in, Beth, just as a matter of review, the back door of the historical society isn't necessarily fire code, and it's the same door that was on the building when, previous to renovation to make it a library, and there's a large gap underneath, so rodents, bugs, worms.
The back door around the, where the, we parked the trailer and the, it's all.
Exactly, exactly.
Piled up against the wall, okay.
And so Joel and Ken actually came up with a great idea, an eyebrow as opposed to a total refit, because the refit of a steel fire door, we got an estimate of fantastic amounts of money.
Six, seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, just the door without.
Well, it's a steel door and a masonry, so.
Yeah.
They'd have to chisel everything out and put all in the frame and then.
Yeah, surprised we didn't put a eyebrow over it in the beginning, but.
We didn't do much of that back wall, I mean, as you noticed, it's still the same one that I was looking at when Dad was chief, so it really hasn't changed at all.
Been a while.
It's been a long time.
Yeah.
So the eyebrow, we have matching pillars, and Jay had also talked about redoing the pillars at the garden entrance of the library, that a few years ago were, were hit by a snowplow, and the bottom of them is not even.
Foam.
It's foam, it's not even B C.
And there were some on the front of the building that were crising up too, is.
Yeah, and I don't want to push my luck, but, I mean, I would, you know me, I don't want to push my luck, but, you know, eventually, and of course, the pillars here got lawnmowed a few years ago, so foam pillars don't work, just for the record. So thank you for the follow-up on that. Fifth grade at CES, I don't know if they've contacted the Highway Department yet, but Jim and Donna Miller from the Center Cleanup Committee are going to organize again, maybe have the Highway Truck to help on Earth Day, and they're going to clean up the center. And again, I like to collaborate, I think that's the important thing about coming to Board of Selectment's meeting, is that sometimes the word doesn't always get around, but that's going to happen.
What's the date on that?
That is Friday, May third.
May third, okay.
Thank you again, my perennial thank you for the use of the Town Hall, I use it often, and it's beautiful, and the floor is wonderful, and I know the bathroom will be fixed. I remember Sam said to me that he was working on maybe a warrant article for a sound system, and have we thought about that? The only reason I would bring that up is because very often. And have we thought about that? The only reason I would bring that up is because very often I will set the town hall up with a microphone, like candidate's night, microphone, amplifier and that sort of thing. I think going down the road, I feel like we need a better sound system in there. And I don't know where to put that or I don't know how to start that process. I'm happy to facilitate that as a library, as a community partner. But I think the acoustics are such in that building and we're using that building so often, which is wonderful. But I do think we are going to do some kind of real amplification in here just to put in the next budget. And before I take off my library hat and put on another hat, the good chief came to me and talked about Narcan. Just if I can add my input, in the library world, Narcan is a part of our day. The New Hampshire Library Association, of which I'm the vice president of, recently did a survey and probably 20% of libraries in the state do not have Narcan. It's very, very common. So, if that adds into your thought process at all, it's in libraries where people go to have ticks removed, to have all sorts of things helped with and certainly overdoses something. And on behalf of the trustees, I would, of course, have to, the process would be that if you decided that that's where you wanted the Narcan box, I would just simply go to the trustees, get their approval. I wouldn't expect an opposition to that, but that's something that libraries do work throughout the state. And if I may just put on my Canterbury Shiva Village hat for just a minute because I see Alan is here and Todd is here. I won't be able to stay for that presentation by Todd. But as a fellow Board of Trustees to Alan, you know, you can feel free in asking me any of those questions. Anything you want to eat?
No. Do we want to have Rachel investigate sound system for the, or excuse me, for town hall?
I would think if Rachel is willing to investigate a sound system for the town hall.
I am absolutely willing to because I just had to, that's what I used my, our grant round two for and that's how I bought all that equipment. And I do use Pro Acoustics. It's fairly online, but it's based in Maryland. And my electrician, as you should be your electrician, Zach Bacon, is very thirst in the installation of that. I'm happy to do some research on that and I can share-
So, that's what you have now or that's what you're looking at today?
I have it in the library.
Oh, in the library, okay.
But I have a connection, Pro Acoustics, and Zach is familiar with the equipment and I'm happy to just look into that as a good do.
Yeah.
And get back to Ken with that. Okay.
Sounds good.
Will do. Because I think that we've done it at the town greatly.
Especially if you have more music events in there too.
What's that?
Especially if you have more music events in there too.
You know, self-serving I am.
Are you going to be leaving it right in the building or?
I would be installed.
So, the equipment that goes with it, the microphones and stuff, Sam's got a cabinet over there to investigate, so.
I think it would be great. Because right now, I slip it across the parking lot and sometimes I'll leave it, which I don't love doing that. But it is the only, we know other organizations has amplifications and there's quite a few events that go on in there that could really use a microphone. So, I'm happy to go into that.
Great.
Good suggestion. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have some, anything she just brought before us?
Yes, true, true, absolutely, yes. Speedy, get up.
Look them up.
All right.
Well, Mother Nature's kind of been done with the white stuff, but a sander went down. We've washed it out. Notice there's no floor in it. Checked on price for the floors, five grand, due to deal, so we'll get it out there and plasma out there to watch. T7, our COVID-550, is now a proponent again, backfiring through the exhaust. T1 is up in Belmont. We're pumping engine oil into the air tanks, probably near the present and such.
What's that, T1, John?
T1, international, older one. The greatest circling dirt roads. We're adding inch and a half zone as needed, trying to keep the toll bills down. Had a few towed out of Pickett Road. And I'll probably be looking at road postings coming off March 25th, depending on Mother Nature.
Yeah.
State doing it at the same time or, state doing it at the same time or?
I don't know what the state's doing. Looking at March 31st, I had a highway going Fort X. And I have trees on Pickett and Carter Hill still to be picked up in my nice little winstall on the other day.
Yeah.
Hopefully, that will break in the new backhoe.
Oh, is it here?
No.
Soon?
Soon.
Good, good. John, typically, Pickett is an example because I go through it every day. The material obviously was pushed off to either side.
Yeah, our company just opened it up. Sometimes we nudge it out a little bit more to get it out of the travel way.
Is the landowner able to take any of that wood for use as far away if he-
It's the landowner's tree, depending on which side it came from.
Understood, right, okay. All right, just asking, just curious, I guess, so.
And is it all far enough that if the landowner doesn't decide to take the wood, the pile of tree stuff is out of the way?
It's out of the travel way.
Ah, okay.
It may be ugly to look at as if you would get Facebook last week.
You may have seen those posts.
I think so.
I did not see them, but I hear about some of them.
Yeah.
And any questions for me?
How about the new grader that was approved? Timeline for that?
November? Nope. I spoke with Jeff Slade today, it's afternoon at 4:30. He said it is tentatively scheduled for delivery from their factory in June to their facility in London.
All right. So, he moved that up.
Moved it up.
Yeah. Can't come soon enough.
Agreed, yeah.
And then from London area to here, what do they have to do to prep it or?
They prep it down there. I don't know, who knows how long it takes, I'm not sure. It wouldn't be a long time.
Yeah.
Couple, three weeks probably. And where he's sending the paperwork that requires signatures for the backhoe is ready for delivery here.
Great.
So, as soon as we get the paperwork all in order and there's a couple of checks we have to give them, then it'll be ours.
Very good.
And he said that they will come up, if the grader is still on schedule to be delivered, they will come up sometime later this spring to look at the Volvo to have us a trade-in on that.
Okay, so you got to keep her going till then? I know that's a, that's a tall order.
Spring and what date is that?
Yeah, it's a moment-to-moment with that. It really is.
We'll hope for the best. That's all we can do? Anybody?
Nope.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Just going to stop.
You have any question?
You better have some. It's just a proper last report for the one.
If they can't afford all four of us this month or the past month, we'll just do that a lot. Obviously, they cover any time we're not covering.
Yeah.
Or sometimes they just, the only handle pool, which is about half of what we usually do. And just to bring you up to date, all our policies and procedures, hence aware of this, is being reviewed and revamped to a new style to make sure that we were good. We revamped those when I first got here and I've been evaluating them every year since. But a company offered to look at them all for 1,600 bucks last year, which they started doing and they're tripling in now. And what that's going to do is make sure that we are ready to be state accredited because all towns and cities are going to have to be state accredited soon. This is kind of the first step, so all our policies will be good to go by summer.
Chief, was that state accredited?
Yeah. So, states, you know how you get cleared for accreditation, so we're going to have to try to get state accredited throughout. They want every town to make sure that their town and city, it's going through the academy, I believe, to make sure that.
So, would it be Director Skipper then that would?
I don't really see it.
Interesting, okay.
So, I mean, first part is obviously the policies. So, a lot of towns and cities have pretty much may have identical policies, kind of tweaked a little bit per township enough to make sure that they're fit. All the crews, any upgrades, stuff like that, including a new one, should be all completed within the next two weeks. It should be good to go very good. And we're in the process, I think you guys are aware of hiring another full-timer for Phil Kaitlin, who's been vacant all last year. We're hoping to put him on here first or towards the end of March, if you guys are aware of that. We're almost complete. We're just waiting on background, what the packet from his agency.
Yeah.
Any others completed?
Brief discussion as far as the academy is concerned.
So, he's good to go. So, this individual is full-time certified. He left his PD last month and that was for just personal reasons. There was no issues with it. He just decided that that agency was not a fit for him, but he got hired part-time by another agency right away and so certification is good. We don't have to do anything.
That's great. Once again, the dates you're considering for-
So, we're hoping to put him on towards the end of April, first of April. I'm sorry, towards the end of March, first of April.
First of, okay.
You guys ready to go?
So, probably schedule him with, for April for us to meet with the Board of Selectmen's-
That would be fine, yeah. Oh, yeah, you guys meet on Monday nights. So, yeah. I would be here for that one, just in case.
April 4th.
I will get him there. But other than that, everything's good. I mean, February is a very slow month for us anyway, other than, I mean, we did only have seven incidents. Most of those were very time-consuming incidents, which is unusual for us.
Yeah.
They took up a lot of our time. Other than that, everything's kind of cohesive, you know, for the most part. Everything's good to go. People are up to speed on everything we're doing on our end, so.
Any luck on the admin position?
Yeah. So, we had a couple applicants, the three of us sat down. We interviewed the first person that we decided was a bit fit, so we're doing the background there as well. So, I would imagine should probably start almost the same time as this individual.
That's to replace Jan?
Deb.
Oh, Deb.
Yeah. So, Jan's there, but Jan's there just temporarily.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jan also said that in April is when she's going to be going away.
Yeah, yeah.
But it might give us a week or two so they can work together and kind of gear her up to speed pretty quickly.
How many hours per week?
That was 29 hours a week. So, the new hours will be, Deb just worked a couple meetings. We had tried that on my first side. She liked to do it.
Yeah.
But we're going to change the hours on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, eight hours a day and the rest of the hours on Thursday.
Okay.
So, she'll be off on Saturdays and Sundays. And we'll bring her in as well.
Sounds good, yeah.
Does anything for you, Chief?
Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
I'll be waiting for the next part.
Chief going to stay for a whole session for later on?
If the chief is available, yeah, absolutely. Where do you leave from here?
Sliding.
It's good to meet.
You didn't approve the last minutes, correct?
No, we haven't got to that.
Okay.
So, there should be, if you'll hand me those red folders. I don't know what this one is.
Oh, this is it.
Okay. All right. And the first one is the accounts payable manifest, right, Ken?
So moved.
All right. And the amount is $34,227.80.
So moved.
Beth, if you could second?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And if you'd just sign and pass that along?
Do you have a pen?
Well, yes, I've got one away.
You got one?
I do. Can't this say you never have a pen? Look it up.
All right. Next, I've got a payroll manifest in the amount of $44,078.69.
So moved.
And seconded?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then we'll take that back from Kent. Thank you. Ken, do we need a motion on this inter-fund transfer?
No.
We're just signing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just say what it is.
All right. So, I've got an inter-fund transfer from TD Bank to the, Ken, help me out. I'm not reading the-
It's the land use change tax?
Yeah, okay.
So, this is a land use change tax penalty that gets paid.
Okay.
That's what it is. Those from the general fund into the land use change tax.
Okay. And the amount is 29, excuse me, the amount is $1421, right? $1,421.
Yeah. Beth will recognize that one.
I was just going to say that.
Yes, I was going to, I know that one.
Yes, she will. All right. So, that's that one.
That is the, this is the wages, the wage increases that was proposed for the 2024 budget. And it's just, would like a motion on that to approve those, the wage increases for 2024.
Are those the wage increases that we voted on at?
That's correct.
That we put in, yes. So, this is just the actual number.
Part of the budget was voted on at town meeting. That is, that is all the official numbers, so if we could just get a motion on that.
All right, all right. There we go.
If you include your, if you just raise it.
Yeah. Is your second?
Beth, if you could get it over?
Oh, the back.
Oh, it's a mistake on it.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, it says Cheryl, not Beth. Pardon. Who's getting selected back there.
So, if I sign this, does that mean Cheryl gets my pick?
You can cross it off and write it in initially if it's on. That'll make you feel better, but you're-
Well, it seems like it would be slightly official to do that.
Yes, it would.
Thank you. Did anybody actually say that?
Did you get a motion on that?
Yes, a motion. All right. And a second? Uh, second.
Thank you.
You need to initial next to where I changed it as well.
So, yeah, that's all set.
And then next are the authorized signers, bank accounts.
Yeah.
So, we need some signatures on there.
Okay. This is what we're going to discuss in the executive session? That's the position for the police department?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. That's the job description.
Yeah, okay. All right. So, we need to sign?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is the administrative assistant position. No, you don't need to, this is just the job description for the administrative assistant of the police department.
Okay. Okay.
It's, I think, I sent you the police chief's job description?
Yeah.
Don't know that you got this.
Nope.
Uh, we're going to need approval on all those updated job descriptions.
Okay.
So you can.
Kent, if you don't mind me interrupting, so this is going to be a whole bunch of them from bottom to top.
Is that to do with the certification, Chief?
Um, yeah, so that's the new, so those aren't complete. They're ninety-nine percent, we had to review them and send them back with any changes. So when they all come back with a thumbs up, then you'll get a copy of every single one of them on a thumb drive, plus a sign-off sheet in the back approving all of the policies. Just to let you know, I mean, it's good reading for now, but
Yeah.
the updated one, there could have been some spelling mistakes or an error or something that went back. So just an FYI on that.
Need error.
Oh, yes, um, only one person can sign there, and Cheryl signed last time, so.
Okay, so.
Who's exactly?
Cal, looks like three or four, right?
Five signatures for you and four signatures for everybody else. And this is so that Beth is an authorized signer now that she's a select.
Yeah.
This is at TD?
All right, I think that's all mine. You're going to check us, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, you should just hand me the sign.
Yeah, yeah.
We can travel with checks.
Yep, exactly. A lot like it.
Anybody remembers what those are?
Yeah. So you both have the executive. So Cal, you plan on passing those around, but I assume we do?
There's two copies.
Very good, okay.
So these are just the ones that I just want to make sure which minutes.
And you need to add one? I can look at the executive session copy back.
Understood. You want to look at this one or? Thank you.
Do you want to hand me that, please sign folder?
Yes, this whole thing, Kent?
Yeah.
Do you want to keep this?
Yeah.
I'll take that back.
Oh yeah, you keep the job description.
Yeah.
But we're getting this and.
We'll be getting all, yeah, we'll give you that all in public and our comments at the end.
Yeah.
That was all set?
Yes.
All right, so that brings us, I think, to the minutes from the public portion on March the fourth. Anybody have anything on those minutes?
That was a meeting I was not at, so I read them, but I don't believe I can comment on them since I was actually.
Kent?
Move the minutes.
On second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstained?
Aye, abstained, yes.
All right, brings me approved. All right, that brings us to the executive session meetings from March fourth, 2024.
So moved.
And seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
I also abstained.
Very good.
Do you want these back?
Yes, please. Pass those to Cal. And the last seven minutes is from the work session on March the fifth.
I haven't seen them, but so moved.
And seconded.
Abstained.
All right, um. All right, so that's set. Um, so we're at the new select board reps, is that what we talked about earlier?
Yeah, that was what we talked about earlier, so we can do that. And then the same thing on T is meeting members.
Yeah. So once again, please just email me what your preferences are, and we'll decide that at the next meeting. And same, Ken, with committee member appointments, correct, since we have none tonight?
Under new business, there's a, it says ordinance for parking.
Yeah.
Uh, we had an issue with some parking in a couple different places in town this year. And the police have been able to get those solved, take care of them, so it's not a problem. However, they said that if it continues to be a problem in specific locations, then the town can pass a parking ordinance, that would be after the board of selectmen. It would be similar to the fire alarm ordinance, or the fire alarm, false alarm ordinance that you guys signed a while ago, where it would be passed by the board of selectmen, posted for thirty days, and then go into effect.
Okay.
So if it continues to be a problem, that is one of the solutions.
Yeah.
Um, and, and that's just, we would probably get a safety ordinance from a separate town and look at it, try to determine. As of now, we don't, we don't have any problems, but, but in the future, if it does persist, then.
Interesting. So Chief, no further issues with that vehicle?
No.
Interesting, well done.
Yeah, and, you know, throughout about the seven and a half years I've been here, very few parking problems. More, more at the beach area.
Yeah.
But it's posted there anyway.
Right.
But without the town, if you're going to do a town ordinance, you got to put it fine, even if it's only five bucks.
Yeah.
Really, if I just put a ticket saying, hey, don't park here, it really doesn't do anything.
Yeah.
Um, we used to have hooks at five dollars. Some people would get upset about that five bucks.
Yeah.
Especially if they got one every night for me.
Yeah.
Some did, but.
Yeah.
It was more for night parking, but we don't, not a lot of people park on the street here, or the roads here, so.
I think certainly if we can get compliant to about an ordinance.
Yeah.
That's how you know, so.
Is there a way to, since I'm new to the conversation, where can I find references to the issue?
It was just somebody parking along the road here. They were parking the wrong way, right around a curve. So they were told not to park in the driveway by the people living there, but it was, it was one conversation, maybe two, and it was over, so.
Uh, the next, we already talked about the parking spaces for the library.
Yeah.
Um, the sealed minutes review process, Cal, do you want to address this?
Yes, I think I put the paper for it in the new business folder. It's a handout from NHMA regarding uh, their recommendations for sealed non-public meeting minutes. Last year, a house bill was passed so that by October third, 2033, you have to review sealed minutes every ten years. So we've got sealed minutes going back for ages, but.
Mm-hmm.
So the, NHMA recommends that you come up with a process, not that you have to do this all immediately, just that you think about it, you come up with a process, and you decide, like, is it going to be one person reviewing? Is it going to be multiple people reviewing? Are you going to do it in stages? Are you going to, just, what are you going to do? How are you going to do it? They don't recommend a process.
Okay.
And they don't, they, you know, there's a process for how or who, but then the person reviewing should know what they are.
Yes, because you have to decide, you have to view it, and then you have to decide, should it still remain non-public?
Right.
But is that based on the person who's doing reviewing, if there's only one of us coming and making a presentation on that particular set of minutes? That's, that's part of the process?
How do you want to do it?
Okay.
You could just have one person doing it, but then, you're right, you would have that issue.
Yeah.
I mean, what, yeah, for one person to decide that they should be sealed, and that seems excessive.
Yeah.
And is this something that we get a copy of, or do I need to read and understand this right now?
I can get you a copy.
Okay, thank you, which is fine, I don't want to waste the time with a lot of people here reading this when I can read it.
For further discussion.
For further discussion. Okay. Please, I would like a copy.
Yeah, I think for all of us, Cal.
Yeah.
And actually, speaking of, which I don't know if this is an okay time to bring up, that if there's action items like that, do they get a list on the side of the minutes? As if Cal's going to send us a list of this, blah, 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 or I promise to do this or anything? Is there a way to generate an action item list at the end of a meeting? So we all keep straight of, just keeping track of the paperwork and the, paperwork and the promises?
I can do that if you guys want.
We used to have an action item list, and, um, it, it, it didn't work out really well, but I would welcome the action item list again.
Okay. I know I certainly would, because quite frankly, this is.
For whatever reason.
This is a lot for all of us to just.
But I would welcome that.
Remember. Um, and I think that would be really helpful, I know for me personally, to make sure things don't get lost.
Do you want the action items just for you guys, or the action items that were said for everybody at the meeting?
Personally, I like them for everybody, because it would be nice to check back. Like, there was something in planning board minutes that said somebody was going to talk to somebody about setting up a meeting about, you know, the, the infrastructure committee. And did that ever happen? I don't know, but I'd like to be able to look down the list and say, okay, this thing should be followed up, was it? You know, it can be as simple as that. Is that, and that might be a lot of extra work to generate that, but I personally would like to know what was going on, not just for us.
I still like the template, like the electronic template that we used before.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it would, it would work good.
Let's try it.
Okay, yeah, please, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Right.
If it doesn't work, we'll know it.
Yep.
So.
Next on the agenda is the town website contract.
Yeah.
This is another thing where you probably need time to read that, and I didn't think of sending it out beforehand. Um, but we need you to decide which of really three, but technically four proposals that we got, which one you'd want to move forward with, so.
Okay.
Four different companies, and I will send out that, I will email that.
Yes.
Please, because I can tell it's going to be the next thing, so.
Kevin, how's your memory? Last year, remember the website you pointed us all to? You remember which town it was?
Plainfield.
Thank you. I thought it was Deerfield, but pretty close, I suppose.
Yeah.
Plainfield.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to take a look at that.
Because I was surprised that such a small town, town, with no, to my knowledge, there was no staff appointed as webmaster or any type of technical.
Yeah, I, I remember after town meeting last year, looking at that website, and it was just simple.
Yeah.
Kind of intuitive and really liking it, so, yeah.
So we'll get a copy of all this, too. And do you want to look at this and all that? Of course, now I can't remember, you said Plainfield, right? Okay.
We'll get that. All right, um.
Next, we have election signs complaint.
Yeah.
And that was more or less just a FYI. I think everybody got the emails and the letters, so it was just, um, there's really no follow-up on that.
Okay.
Just also, I pass that on, we have a board meeting at the farmer's market, one of the, they also brought up not only election signs, but farmer's market signs, to make sure that they're not put at, because when you do pull up to that intersection, if something's perpendicular and out, you can't see. So that's on my list on the, for Wednesday's board meeting.
Yeah.
We'll make sure our signs don't aggravate anyone.
Sounds good.
Or impede vision.
All right.
And the next one was Wyben Road, and that was just, there's a packet there with all the, with the letters from the people up in that area found that got concerned, so.
That's everything you forwarded to me, right? So, because I printed that off.
Correct. Is anybody here to speak on Wyben Road?
If we can enlighten you in any way, please.
Enlighten is always a good thing. Thank you, Webb. Have the letters public or no?
I believe they are, I think. Communications to the East Department of Planning Board are public.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So, yes.
Is there a fee for getting copies of those, or?
Uh, if, you can come up to the town office, and we usually charge fifty cents a hard copy.
Yeah.
I think it's six or seven.
Yeah, yeah, but I think, yes, that's about right, six or seven, so.
It can't be just, do you know that?
Pardon?
Can't be just, as opposed to printing, what happens if you email them out?
We can email electronically, sure.
Yeah.
We scan them electronically and send them out, right? There's no charge for that.
Thank you. That seems, that seems a lot more efficient.
Saved you a whole three dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you very much.
That adds up.
There might be more.
Yeah, that's right. Webb, please, go ahead.
Thank you, without knowing what was said in the letters, I haven't read them, but I'm sure there's some concern as to, I'm guessing, as to the material that's going to be put on Wyben Road.
You would be correct.
Um, it is pretreated soil from ESMI. Um, I do have a letter from the state, because I contacted the state, because they're really kind of the overseers of this material where it can and can't go. And they set up rules and regulations. And I contacted them back, and I think it was back in January. And it took them a while to formulate a letter, but I do have a letter, and I explained to them that basically this is just going to be used as a subbase for Wyben Road, and it'll be topped with a crush or whatever they put on for a final topping. So they did some research, and they, I do have the letter here, I just have one copy. Um. Did you guys get a copy of that? Is that the letter on the ESMI? This is from the state.
Yeah.
I think that's it, isn't it?
No, I didn't see that.
So certainly, you may be the only one.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So.
I have a one, I have a copy of that website. You do? Oh, okay. All right. Um, basically what that says is they have determined that Wyben Road, and I shouldn't say just Wyben Road, but a road base or road is not considered a residential use. This material cannot be used in a residential situation. It cannot be used for fill, for septic system, it cannot be put on a residential lot. That being said, if it was a commercial industrial lot, it can be used. Um, there's certain rules and regulations on that paper that states where it can be used, how far away from wetlands and the so forth, and burial grounds and everything else. So that's basically all that we're going to be using for the subbase. That won't even be used for the driveways. But the state has no problem with it, because I talked with Mark at ESMI, and he says, well, our hands are kind of tied. If they deem it residential, it should be all set. And the state has deemed roads as non-residential.
Even if they have, but, and pass through and next to, and then are in proximity to residential? The fact the road itself is?
The road itself.
Interesting.
Is not residential.
Webb, is disclosure required?
It is, yes, and that'll be put on, I'm sorry, I'm doing a two-lot subdivision. It is, yes, and that'll be put on, I'm sorry, I'm doing a two-lot subdivision, you probably all know, down on Wyven Road. So yes, the state's gonna want that put actually right on the plan, and it does state that in there, if the, if the material ever does get moved or dug up or for some reason gets graded off, that it has to be treated as, I'm not gonna say a contaminated soil, the soils that come out of there are way cleaner than what's on the side of the road. This 80%, 90% of their soils are from gas stations where they dig it up and about 70% of those soils are clean, they're not even contaminated. But they dig up such a big area that all those soils get grabbed and put in there. They've got quite a, quite a system over there. They have to have, I think it was a thousand, after a thousand cubic yards, they have to have it tested, it's tested off-site. It's, people come in and they test it to make sure that they're well below their minimum criteria for the soils.
Webb, what are they testing for?
They're basically testing for, it's, it's, there's metals, it's the gas, the petroleum, oils, they do get soils from accidents, vehicles and the such, they will get that all set.
What about P4s?
I'm not 100% sure on that, whether they're testing for that. I, I do have a list of what they do test for.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's.
Could you pass that on to us?
I, yes, I can. Yeah, yeah. All their tests are well below residential standards of the soil that comes out of there. You said there's an area down in Worcester, just digging out of the side of the ground is 30 over, whatever, 30 parts per million or whatever, over of metals, a lot of stuff that they take in and take care of, where they're, I think they're at eight or nine percent when it comes out.
And I guess with respect to, I assume, heavy metals, right?
Yes.
Does incineration mitigate heavy metals or do they still remain?
I'm not 100% sure on that. They have a crusher, because a lot of times they'll get some stones, some granite, some brick, some of this is coming from home demolitions. So they process that, meaning they, they crush it. They treat it first, crush it, and then they heat it again. They have to treat it again and test it. There's tests going on all the time, they've got a pretty good facility.
Yeah, and the treatment, as I understand it, consists of, they're heating the material, correct?
They're, yes, exactly, they're, they're burning it.
Yeah.
You go over there and it looks like piles of lumber. It doesn't look like there, it's, it's black.
Gotcha.
It's black.
It seems like it would be helpful to have, you know, a, a explanation of this directly from the company or a company representative is to, true, who we had questions could answer them with, with their information.
Sure.
Can we find this, I mean, I've been to, I went to their website briefly, but I didn't see, you know, a complete explanation.
Right. Again, it's, it's more, it's more from gas stations is where their material comes from, that they have to treat. That's a majority of their, their treatment. But I, I can get ahold of Mark, it's Mark Aubrey who I spoke with, and I can give him a call and see if he would be willing to come in and sit down and speak with you folks.
I think that's a great idea.
It, it seems it would be really beneficial to talk to the people who are actually creating the materials. Not that you haven't done your reading, but, but it's not your business, it's not your, it's not your materials. And we're gonna be relying on, you know, their.
Right, he would be able to tell you the, the thresholds that they have to maintain for these type of different metals or oils or gas or petroleum that are in there.
Now, that's also them, but do we need to, does D, does DES have a representative that would, I mean, they're the one who's finally approving it.
They, they have, that's it, right there, that's it, right there.
It seems like there ought to be a joint meeting between the planning board as well so we can understand what's being said out.
Does that make sense to me?
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. Yeah, that way we can ask questions directly of the company.
The only thing that I can think of is the concerns that some of these abutters may have. I was planning on, we are scheduled hopefully for the April, I believe it's the April 9th meeting, to bring this back to the planning board and Mark was gonna be there, I was gonna have Mark show up to talk to the planning board.
Okay.
I don't know if that's gonna work for you folks, or do you want something early?
It may be an opportunity.
It's a Tuesday night.
It's a Tuesday night, yes, first Tuesday, first or second?
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday. Yes, I believe it's the night.
I'll be there anyways. I don't know, if you turn on the listening.
Oh, yeah.
I wonder if the planning board wants to consider a change of venue. I expect there might be some neighbors attending that night as well.
To town hall?
That's what I'm thinking. I can only suggest, but that would be, I think, a worthwhile thing to consider.
Can a request be made to have it recorded? Video recorded? And audio recorded?
Do we normally record those?
We don't, the planning board has not been recording their meetings, but we could probably come up with a solution to that.
That would bring us back here, though.
As a solution.
Pardon?
As a solution.
Yeah.
I can talk to Lois.
We'll, 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 we'll work on that. We have the old system that we used here, that before we had this camera.
Yeah.
And we can see if that works.
Yeah, Edgar, have you been to the planning board?
Only the public hearings, but this seems pretty interesting, so I might be there.
I will, actually, maybe I'll have Lois get ahold of you, Ken, if we can't make that agenda, just to make sure, I don't know, I requested it, I'll see.
Is that enough time to post everything that we need to weekly as far as, as a public hearing? Okay.
If there's no more questions, I will let you get on the video and benefit. Thanks, Webb. I appreciate your coming.
No, thank you, that would be an interesting meeting.
Anybody else here that wants to talk about Wyven Road before we leave now?
So the purpose, sorry, I'm Kathy, I live at 93 Wyven Road, probably the places during the subdivision, any question? The question I have is, was that the purpose for putting it on the agenda was just to talk about the, the letters and stuff?
Information, absolutely, yeah, we're, we're certainly not, it isn't our place to make any decisions at this point, anyway.
I was just curious about that, we saw that on, we wanted to know what that was all about.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we've looked at all the correspondence we've, we've received, it's a lot of correspondence concerning one issue, so.
Okay, perfect, thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, what was your name again, please? Kathy, Kathy, yes.
Historic district? Yeah?
I'll just give a little background real quick, I got a letter, an email on February 22nd from Kate Katz, who's a trustee up at the Shaker Village, and I think I forwarded it to you and Beth, this is in reference to some work that has happened up there in the past, the trustees are, I guess for a better phrase, are trying to make amends for some of the things that they've done that maybe should have gotten a permit.
Are these the dam issues or?
Let's see, I'll go down the list.
I shouldn't say dam issues.
Yeah, no, no. So, so Mr. Katz put some applications in to the HDC, was for the meeting house windows, they've been awarded a grant to restore 10 windows in the meeting house, the brethren shop roof and chimneys, they have DHR approval, expect that work to start, generators, a belated HDC application, work on generators, the dwelling house roof, a belated HDC application on the, on the roof, and then the schoolhouse, let's see, let's see, it says, it's, it's not clear whether an HDC application was or not filed with the town, this work did get a DHR approval, with the exception of some wood repairs and paint, is substantially complete. And his, he said by his reckoning, we owe $260 for application fees. And then the last part of his email is, one last item deals with our parking lot about two years ago, the facilities manager, it laterally spread, recycled last fault, but a section of main parking lot without consultations, thus changing the nature of the landscape. Kevin Bragg raised an issue at the building committee meeting to which his concern was acknowledged. We both recognized we could not unring that bell, Kevin and I both felt we were putting money in the parking lot, a full line grading and drainage restoration would be in order, that remains on the long to-do list. So that is more or less what this is about. I felt that when I got the email and, and Kevin, you were CCing on it, so because the Shaker Village is, is part of the historic district and this is really a historic district commission issue, then it was probably better that we deal with it in this, this format. So I guess, Kevin, if you wanna start then?
We've had discussions within a historic district commission over the years about the interactions with Shaker Village's staff and projects that have gone on up there that not only did we not know about, but other departments within the town that, whether it was occupancy or fire or whatever, should have been aware of at the very least if not an actual permit needed. And so we've been trying to work over the last two years, maybe, at least, on strengthening the communication in an effort so that it's not like we just find out about this stuff. And your example of the dam is a prime example, I don't believe any part of that project came before the HDC, let alone, to my knowledge, any other department that they have had some.
Conservation or anyone?
Whatever, yeah. And, and there's a long list of those over the years, it's not just this previous director, but directors prior to. And so it's a systemic issue up there and part of it is, is the turnover with directors, obviously, but also we feel among the commission members is that it's the organization itself that has to value putting the town in the loop. They're required under their preservation easements and conservation easements to do certain things for the state whenever there's an alteration. There should be a similar thing with the town, because we request that of all of our council. When Amy Lee wanted to do something, he's in that district, he has to follow a process. And it's hard to hold others accountable when, you know, you know that other things just kind of fly by. So anyways, moving forward, David, who I've worked with on the, the building committee of the village, seems to be very much interested in trying to repair that, understand what's required and whatnot to that. Todd Mclado is here, Todd, your official title is?
I'm the facilities and property manager.
Facilities and property manager.
Welcome, Todd.
Yes.
And Todd and I have had a chance to walk around some, but certainly not enough, mostly my lack of time, and going over some of the things that are here on this paper and some other projects too. And so in the meantime, until they find a new executive director and get staff functioning the way it should, Todd is going to be the catch-all. So first off.
Lots of juggling.
Lots of juggling, because we know lots of people out there too. And so it's not to, it's not to beat them down by any means, but it, it, moving forward, the commission really felt, you know, we need to start new and get something in place so that with changes that are likely to occur up there over the next couple of years, there's a large building needs issue up there and funding is going to be sought and projects will move forward. We need to have something in place moving forwards that the process is there and not what we've seen in the past, because we have issues now of things that even were approved that now have fallen into, I don't know, things that really shouldn't be, you know, moving of dumpsters to places that weren't initially allowed for. Lack of fencing that used to be there that isn't there, that utilities are exposed now and not, you know, there's lots of little, I'll call them nitpicky things, but in an effort to try to keep everybody up to snuff, there's gotta be a way that we can correspond and say, hey, this is not it. And the parking lot is probably the largest one, and it's not just the parking lot, it's on the core side of the village, within the village itself. And so I don't know the details of who made the decision, but the fact that you did such a massive change to the landscape that I know didn't go through the city, because whether the historic folks or the conservation folks knew about it, there would have been a discussion about it. So that tells me that they've already corresponded for the state.
That's the big main parking lot where you go and?
The main parking lot, but then across the street as you walk into the core of the village.
Oh, yeah.
That, was that wrap that's been used over there too? And it's, and it's unfortunately not the solution to the problem.
It is not solving it.
Correction of drainage.
Before my time, yeah.
Yeah, it's before, yeah, let me make that clip.
Yeah, it's certainly not the solution. Yeah.
But what, what we've found, and I learned this years ago, is, is that lots of times in front of the HDC, issues come to a much better conclusion because there's lots of brains thinking about it and stuff gets churned over and come up with a better idea or better solution. And certainly, lots of money could have been saved on applying that wrap and purchasing it and gone into the actual problem of fixing the drainage. So just a small example of what we hope to change. Part of the thing that we've offered is, is that obviously they, they are a little bit different beasts than the average homeowner, and so they have lots of projects, whereas somebody may only have one or two a lifetime. And so what can we do to maybe streamline the notification and how much of that has to go through the entire process? We now have this labor process, which I don't necessarily think is the solution to them not ever having to come here, but there may be smaller projects that don't have to get delayed and cost money that we could work in this process. But the main thing is, is that I think Harry would agree, is, is that the state has certain requirements, they're understaffed, they don't keep up on it, and town, same thing, we're understaffed, we can't be out there policing everybody where we want it, but.
Do you have regular meetings with, scheduled, does HCC have regular meetings scheduled at the village with?
Oh, with the village, no, no, and that's one thing that we talked about, and I think that's why David had asked Todd to come, certainly is to hear what we're talking about.
Yeah.
And, and we had talked about, for instance, using, the state requires an alteration request form, I think, right? Anytime you do pretty much any work that would fall under what the HDC would require, you'd have to file a form with the state. And so we had asked, why not CC us? We don't even have to create a form. David just puts it on our radar and then we can inform the village, yeah, this would require a hearing, or no, it doesn't rise to that level.
I think there are two significant things happening that are gonna change things. One is there's gonna be a new chairman of the board coming in April, I think, and there's gonna be a new executive director. And our problem, I think, has been education more than anything else. And I think with those two changes, the old executive director, the, the old chairman of the trustees got the message, but she was so busy trying to raise money that it didn't transform into action. But I think the new executive director, I think it's gonna be Mr. Katz, isn't it? He speaks for himself with, with his letter, he's aware, and I think that's gonna make a huge difference. And I think the new executive director needs to make a big difference, because in the past, executive directors have not been concerned too much about town issues. And I think we need to really make enough. And I think we need to really make an effort to get them concerned about town issues. And as a matter of fact, Kevin and I are both gonna be there for an interview with people who are doing the executive search right now on the 29th, I hope you're gonna be there. And they're looking for input from the town.
Oh, perfect. That's good timing.
And, yeah, it is, good timing. So those are two things. I'm optimistic that this whole thing is gonna get fixed.
Yeah.
Well, it seems like if you're willing, if the HCC has the effort, the time, and to put some effort into it to help the village to reach out and say, look, we wanna have, what is, would once a month meeting be enough to say, what's, hello, face to face, what are you doing? And what should we be aware of? And read us in, and by the way, here's all our email addresses again. And copy it's on all this stuff. I mean, if there's a new executive director, the time really seems...
Yeah, I think we got somewhat spoiled with Scott Swank in the sense that he was there during a lot of building and was involved with going through the process of historic district approval and other approvals that were needed for building permits.
But Scott was many years ago?
Many, many years.
That was when we were doing Halloween up there, so that was a long time ago.
And, and so we're a lot of the line that all kind of fell off. And, um, it's not an excuse, it's just a fact.
Yeah.
So we have, we have some applications here that we just now are seeing. We have some applications for projects that have happened. And it's kind of a...
Applications for things that have happened?
Yeah. Um, and so we have a meeting on Wednesday. We're gonna go over these, flush it all out, make it work, whatever. But, um, you know, one of the things I see, particularly with most historic properties, is, you know, funding's an issue, and they're looking for adaptive reuses. And this is gonna become something that's not just an external HDC issue. You're gonna have planning board issues, you're gonna have conservation commission issues.
Would you explain, excuse me, would you back up what's adaptive reuses?
So, in an effort to find new income streams, you look at properties and say, how, we better use these properties to create income.
Gotcha.
So, you know, whether it's artists in residence or leasing out buildings, land...
Concerts in the meeting hall?
All kinds of stuff.
Okay.
Doesn't mean it's bad, just means that it's stuff that, you know, when you're not aware that something's being rented out, um, you know, for a commercial processing kitchen, which it was, which is clearly not allowed in that zone, um, that's a problem. But it's not the HDC, it's RALM.
Yeah.
So there's gotta be a con to it, and that's what we're, at least from this standpoint, starting. I think it would be helpful also, planning board at some point.
Yeah, I just, um, bring you guys, I think Ken, Scott realize, Beth, but, um, we visited, myself, the town assessor, Mandy Irving, and Joel, the building inspector, co-enforcer, visited the property and did a tour last fall. And it was very helpful. Um, some of the things that Kevin was talking about from the assessment standpoint may have an effect on their tax exempt status. So that has to be done very carefully, uh, because that, that could be a problem for the, for the village if, if, uh, if they change the use of a particular area or, um, if there's, if there's one building that is used primarily for a purpose other than what is being used out, then that could change the tax exempt status for that particular building. So, so a lot of these things, these communications have to be, um, really right at the, right at the speed.
Does it make any sense at all to have a select board rep to the village?
Um...
I mean, it's another, it's another line of, of time to go with. But if looking in a bigger sense, not just historically, but any other land use or environmental concerns or building use or whatever, does it make any sense to actually be part of the conversation at that level?
Could be. I think in the past, the, the town has relied on members of the boards of, of the trustees who have been residents in town.
Like Rachel being on the board?
Either on a board or a committee and, and have that ability to, to communicate that with the appropriate people. And, um, I, you know, it's one of those things that I think just kind of, as Kevin said, it just...
You know, Howard was there and Bassett's been there.
Yeah, yeah. So it just, but, but I think probably having some kind of formal representation...
I was just gonna say, to make it slightly more formal, even to have a representative like Rachel comes in and does a presentation to the board selection, as opposed, you know, have somebody from the village at a regular interval come in and say...
Scott, here's...
They, they are part of the town, and it feels like they're way over there. Nobody, you know, they're doing their own thing, and obviously, they're doing their own thing. But, but they are part of the town and subject to town...
Yeah.
Rules and ordinances, so...
And I, and I will say that...
Let's invite them to the table.
As, as Kevin said, that Mr. Katz is, uh, has become very proactive in trying to communicate with the town. He's really trying to, to break this up this evening.
He has experience in town government.
Yeah, yeah, he's on the planning board up in Bristol.
Oh, okay. Okay, then. So, a meeting, a meeting or two would be a problem. Whether it be, or, or some representative. But it seems like to formalize it a little bit more.
Yeah. And, and I think once we get things flushed out with the HCC, and I think if we could do something like with the, the request forms and, and we're CC'd, at least we know, yeah, this is fine.
Aware.
You know, because lots of things, the state's gonna have a much higher level to reach for, right?
Yeah.
But not always.
Yeah.
There, there, I've had worse conversations with Laura Black at DHR, and, um, some of the things I talked to her about, she was like, whoa, did not know that.
Interesting.
Well, and there are code issues. We, we did find a few code issues when we were doing our walkthrough. Nothing serious, but enough that, that it was pointed out and they were gonna make some changes.
Well, if you get into the habit of having code issues, who knows what other habits you get into?
Yeah, yeah.
And they are, they are part of the town, so we should... I, I, for one thing, formalizing a little bit more, uh, communications with them would only be helpful.
And I think having this part-time position now, too,
Yeah.
from all aspects, not just the village, but, again, that may be a point person that somebody can contact right away if something comes up with abilities.
This is, oh, the...
The land use person.
The land use person, oh.
Yeah.
It's also a big added factor in having Rachel Baker on the board now.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In there. So that's really, you know, Ken asked me to come in and kind of flesh this out and, um, you know, I think we're going in the right direction, but...
Sounds like it.
It's good to know the past history in case we get stuck in the same thing.
Yeah.
It's not like, well, I told you so, it's like, you know? And I think that's the thing, is, is, it, it's, it's not the folks there now, it's just the history, which leads me to believe it's not just the staff.
Yeah.
It's a, the culture.
Yeah.
Kind of lost along the way.
Yeah.
Not quite what one would think of the Shaker way, so...
Yeah.
Doesn't feel like it, anyway. But, but I think, um, you know, timing is everything. And if there's a new change at the top, that might be a good time to step in and say, you know, all right, so long as you're reorganizing.
Yeah, it's a good time to move forward.
Yeah, good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Way to see it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I would like to say, yes, I know that past relationships have been kind of rocky, and I feel like we all are now. In the best interest of the village, but also of the town. We're, we're really hoping to bring the town back to the village in so many ways. So I'm, I'm really excited to hear about this and would really like to be a part of working with it.
Yeah, but there's been a number of board members who have approached me. It's about getting the town re-involved, obvious reasons.
Yeah.
Nonprofits need volunteers.
Yeah, there you go.
And so, it'll work for everyone.
Very good.
Good.
Thank you all.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate you coming in.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for spending the time. Thanks, Kevin.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Board Coordinator.
One, one point in order. Who is our, um, board rep these days?
So they're gonna decide that, uh, on April 1st.
April 1st, okay. Just wondering. I thought we were on any of you.
Yep.
I know Kent's stretched.
No, I'm not.
No, okay.
Thanks, Kevin.
All right.
Good job. Thank you for that, gentlemen. All right. We need to, right, I'll make a motion that we adjourn into executive session to discuss a personnel...
It was just a, my question was, again, there was letters that came through about the issue up at the municipal complex and the solar panels and arcing thing. Um, anyway, I was down today behind the fire pond, and I was thinking, um, is it a good time to check those solar panels as well? Fred Portnoy was down there, I think he would be changing, you know, moving panels, but some of them are canted, some of them are bent, some of them are...
Yeah, and that's what Kent was, Kent was working with Fred and he was gonna try and adjust them. And, uh, I think, uh, the discussion was at one point, Kent, correct me if I'm wrong, was that maybe, um, twice a year, they get moved to better, get better angles.
Change on the angle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're gonna set them for summer, there's more up there now.
Makes sense, yeah.
Um, yes, but not, not that issue per, is there an issue that is similar? Could there be an issue similar to those panels, as up to be miserable?
But I did talk to Jim Slater about that, and he was gonna check.
Oh, okay.
Down here.
Yeah.
And see if it's the same issue.
Okay, that's all, I just wondered. And, um, my only other question was, um, this was a follow-up item, and maybe, again, that there's a, a list eventually, an action list of all the things that, who said that they were gonna do what? Um, did Greg ever reach out to Josh and you about the capital improvement committee?
No.
Because those were, that was a note from, um, the February meeting in the planning board draft minutes. I believe, oops, excuse me, I missed the one. Yeah, Greg would reach out to Ken to schedule a meeting with Joshua and Ken and himself to, um, talk about reinstating the...
Capital...
No, the capital improvement committee.
Nope, I will, uh, contact him.
Since we don't apparently... Yeah, to, to just see what, where it is, see if we have one, if we need one, see if, about setting one up.
Yeah.
Those are my two questions.
Okay. And while we're on, uh, while we're still in public session, I wanted to make sure that, that I understood the incident that happened with, uh, the ZBA. I know there was a request made for what should be public applications, right? And the chair of the ZBA refused that request.
So the, uh, um, there was a request by, uh, attorney for the application and accompanying documents, and the ZBA chair, um, didn't, didn't feel that the accompanying documents were part of public record. He was corrected on that, and, um, that information was, was forwarded to the attorney.
Yeah. Am I correct? The chair of the ZBA should not have been deciding that anyway.
I think, my, my, my thought would be that, that he probably should have contacted council or, or the town office or something to put some, some advice on the map.
I think moving forward, that should certainly be what happens.
Yeah.
And, and some of the materials, as I understand it, were being stored at someone's house, is that correct?
Right.
So, I guess to make sure that none of this happens again, I, I wanna make sure that, how do we draft a town policy that applications and public documents that come in remain at Sam Lake and get scanned and emailed?
So you, we can, I could draft a policy and have it for you guys for your next meeting. And it says that, we have one point in the past few years, we had, I would say, an informal agreement with the secretaries that that was going to happen, that the documents stayed there because we ran into a couple of problems where some vendors came in looking for documents for public hearings and they weren't available.